Oh, my God. What does she sign? That's the name of the college?
Uh, no. Uh, Parkview Road School in Kansas City.
Oh, my God. That is beautiful.
Yeah.
We will now call our council meeting to order. Madam Secretary.
PR 23010, National Police Week Proclamation.
This week is our National Police Week. And it is truly an honor because the men and women behind me, every day, they get up before the break of day, they leave their families, and they go out in these streets in the city of Colleen. They're putting their life on the line every day and every night. But to just give them a week just to honor them, shameless. They should be honored every day you see them, saying thank you for your service. Because of you, I can sleep at night. Because of you, I know that if my child is not home, if I call, you're going to be out there looking for my child. So we should give them a round of applause because of what they do. Thank you for following the choir. So it gives me great pleasure to read tonight proclamation. The city of Colleen in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Police Officers' Day in the calendar week in which the date falls as National Police Week. And whereas, established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, the National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas, the men and women of law enforcement risk their lives every day to protect and serve their communities with integrity, bravery, and dedication. And whereas, the 336 employees of the Colleen Police Department have dedicated their lives to service of protecting, defending, and serving their community. And whereas, during National Police Week, we come together to recognize and celebrate the vital role that law enforcement officers play in ensuring public safety and upholding the rule of law in our society. And whereas, National Police Week provides an opportunity to honor the selfless service and sacrifice of our police officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Now therefore, I, Debbie Nash King, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the city of Colleen mayor, do hereby proclaim May 14 through May 20, '23, as National Police Week. I'm going to shake all their hands, and following that, we will hear from our Assistant Police Chief, Gerhard.
Thank you for your service. 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 Sir, would you please take the mic, and introduce your awesome team?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, for taking the time to recognize us with your proclamation. Thank you to the council as well. None of us get into this job for the accolades or the recognition, but it sure feels good when we get it. I would like to introduce a few of our guys here. We have our command staff here in the white shirts. This here is Officer Kraus. He is our new homeless outreach officer. Commander Tony Lawrence, the CID commander. The tall guy here is Commander Ronnie Supack. He's a patrol commander. And then we have our Support Services Division Commander, Tony McDaniel. And then our Training Division Commander, Robert Rush. And next to him, these fine officers we have here that will be working while the rest of us are sleeping tonight till seven in the morning. We have Officer Swain. Officer Sierra. And Officer Reed. They'll be answering those calls tonight while we're all sleeping in our beds nice and safe. And I thank you to you all for doing that for us. Again, it sure feels good to get the recognition. That's not what we're here for, but thank you. Thank you for taking the time. Anytime I get the chance to speak about Police Week and the Police Memorial Day in public, I like to always repeat the names. And we have three names here in Colleen there on the wall in Washington, DC. Town Marshal John Blair, by 1917, lost his life. Then we have Officer Bobby Hornsby, more recently in 2013, and Detective Chuck Dinwiddie in 2014, all lost their life in service of the citizens of Colleen. So I always like to take a chance to remind people of their names and say them out loud. To that, I just want to say thank you to the mayor and thank you to you all for the recognition.
Thank you all once again for your service. Now we will have what we all have been waiting for. Madam Secretary.
PR 23011, Presentation Regarding the Oasis Fresh Market by Mr. Ronnie Russell and Mr. A.J. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Russell, thank you for joining us tonight, and thank you for, when I called you, to present this idea, not only to the council members that hadn't had the opportunity to hear, but also to our residents, just to see more about the grocery store, the probability, and what is needed at the council. So whenever you're ready, sir, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, while you're still here. City Council members, I appreciate just having this time. So, of course, today's presentation is about the Oasis Fresh Market and solution to the food desert. So I'm not going to talk about what we already know. We already know that there is a food desert. When I was trying to, when I was coming up with the what's the what makes sense in the conversation, I kept repeating and telling myself, what do we not know? What information need to be brought out in order for us to know? So I want to go back in the timeline on how this came about. The chamber, of course, was started in 2020, and in 2021, we took the personal approach in how do we bring a grocery store? So in 2021, a team of five of the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce members went to Tulsa, Oklahoma, with the idea to create a Texas-to-Tulsa tour. As we toured Black Wall Street, we met with the Vice President of Reesers, Mr. Grant, which is kind of like an HEB version in Oklahoma. But little did we know, the Texas-to-Tulsa tour would actually turn into a much more significant experience of a Tulsa-to-Texas. And as we hosted a city visit, we extended the invitation to Vice President Grant to come to Colleen, the land of infinite potential. Y'all can keep that one if you want. The land of infinite potential. And Mr. Grant noted that if Reesers would come to the area, they would need to bring three grocery stores. So in order for them to come to Colleen, they would have to have three. And I think a lot of times, people don't know, like, what does it take to bring a grocery store? They would have to have three grocery stores to make at least $1 million a week collectively from all three grocery stores. But what happened after that was he had a pre-existing relationship with Mr. A.J., Mr. Johnson, and the Vice President of Reesers said, I want to connect you with Mr. Johnson. He has a business model that is geared specifically for food deserts, and that's how we got to this location. And the impact of the community, for those that don't know, IGA Foodliner went out, left the city of Colleen August of 2019. HEB downtown location left the city of Colleen August of 2019, which I didn't know both of them left the same year. You know, we knew that they left, but when they left, I didn't know when I was doing my research. But I firmly believe that this anchor institution will create a community wellness solution. Looking at the zip code, zip codes that are affected with this food desert, there's over 47,959 citizens in the immediate area. So I would like to introduce you to Mr. A.J. Johnson of Oasis Fresh Market, who's going to deliver the overview of Oasis Fresh Market, mission and goals of Oasis Fresh Market, description of the market's offerings and its wraparound services, benefits of Oasis Fresh Market to the community, successful examples of similar initiatives that he has done in Tulsa, Oklahoma, and the benefits and potential impact that Oasis Fresh Market will have here in the city of Colleen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am. Honored to be with you all, and I feel like it was a testimony service. All the pastors and everyone given honor. Can you, oh, perfect. I will pull, turn my camera on. Well, good to see you guys. I grew up Church of God in Christ, so I feel like saying I want to give honor where honors do. Thank you, good Lord. An honor to be with you all. Congratulations to all of the newly appointed councilmen and councilwomen. My name is A.J. I am the owner and founder of Oasis Fresh Market, and we were intentional about picking the name Oasis, because by definition, Oasis means refuge, safe place, shelter. In North Tulsa, this was the first grocery store in over 14 years, and the first black-owned grocer in over 50 years. And why that's so important, if I can share my screen. Can you see that all right?
Yes, sir.
Why that's so important here is because in food deserts, as you all know, one in six people in America live in food deserts. Food deserts, as the USDA classifies them, it's different than a food swamp. A food swamp is our fast food places, but a food desert is where individuals may live less than nine miles or less than an urban community, and 20 miles to the near supermarket in a rural community, which makes them a food desert. And as many of you know, in underserved communities, 80% of Americans that live in food deserts across the country are black and brown communities. So this staggering statistic is something that we definitely must change, because the lack of fresh and healthy access is killing people. In North Tulsa, what was once called Black Wall Street, individuals are dying 11 years faster, or living 11 years shorter, we said it a different way, than those that live in any other zip code in South Tulsa. That's a staggering statistic that I really want us to pay attention to. I'm not sure what, yet in my research, what the life expectancy is within the city of Colleen. Sidebar, I grew up in a single-parent home, first-generation college graduate, first-generation business owner. My uncle was in the military, and I would spend summers there at Colleen. So the military base, I'm very much so familiar with, because he served there, so grateful for the police and military that's there. So it's almost like a second home. We talked about it was once called Black Wall Street, just that history there, and there's a resurgence happening here. But one thing that we do that's somewhat unique is grocery stores are only part of the solution. In underserved communities, there's high poverty, unemployment, chronic illness, abandoned vacant homes, undereducation, low transportation, low healthcare. And so for us, we try to focus on the holistic person. Having a grocery store is important, and we have a program that's a federal program. It's a dollar-for-dollar match for individuals that are on food stamps that will help them get up to $20 per day that can only be spent on fresh produce and fresh vegetables. That's so key for us, because that's how we know that, that's how you break the cycle of generational poverty, through education, but also through food. Food is medicine. We have a motto. Come on. Am I frozen? Okay. Our motto is, "More than just groceries, equipping for life." That's so important, because we tell our community, the success of the grocery store does not just depend on A.J., but it depends on all of us, and all of us having quality lives. As I mentioned, the definition of Oasis means refuge, safe place, shelter. We want people to be seen, safe, and heard, and this is just a collection of what our community is made up of and who they are. Oasis is a unique hybrid. We opened in May 2021, right before the Tulsa, the centennial of the race massacre, first full-service grocery store, but yet we have $10 generals within a two-mile radius of North Tulsa. So as you can understand and process that information, individuals, for 14 years, the only access they had to really fresh food, if you want to call it, were dollar stores and gas stations. And so it's pretty historic for us to have a grocery store with a unique hybrid blend of a nonprofit as well. Some of the things that we cover is the Double Up Program, which is a federal program that we talked about. But the unique difference, really, for us to partner with you all, and some of the data is very much so the same. The demographics, the community makeup is very much similar to Tulsa, Oklahoma, and Black Wall Street, but having that strong military presence is really even a greater advantage to partner with the local businesses there, the local nonprofits, and continue on the work that Mr. Ronnie is doing, which I'm so grateful for. And these are some of the services that our nonprofit offers, utilities and rent assistance, transportation with our seniors that live within a two-mile radius, that have a chance to be picked up for free, no charge to them, medical assistance. We do outreaches where individuals can get their blood pressure, eye screenings, glasses, financial literacy, employment cases, but also we have case managers, where we have two social workers on staff, because in underserved communities, as we all know, there's a, individuals can face more trauma, more stress, and so we have found that both this holistic approach is really key to the sustainability of outcome-based results that bring about change. The sustainability side of it, we believe in the power of partnership. We've got a great city council. Shout out to Councilor Vanessa Harper over District One here in Tulsa, Oklahoma, but as well as Rose Washington, who was our CDFI partner, Tulsa Economic Development Corporation. And the sustainability portion of how does this continue to go on through the nonprofit side? So we have a for-profit, which is a grocery store, and the nonprofit provides the wraparound services. I'll pause there to ask if there's any questions. I know that I kind of elaborated a lot, but it would be an honor to partner with the city of Colleen, as I mentioned. It's almost like a second home, and how our paths collided with Mr. Ronnie and Mr. Grant, the VP of Reesers. We are different than normal big-box grocery stores, is that we don't have to go through the bureaucracy to make a decision, as long as we have committed partners in place and strong for-profit and nonprofit components that want to come alongside to transform a community, to transform and reach people. That's our honor to do.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. So I have several questions, and council, if you would like to chime in, just tap in. First of all, thank you and Mr. Russell for even taking this challenge on. We know there's been a food desert in the city of Colleen for a long time, and for you to be working behind the scenes. See, that's where stuff really happened. We think that everything happened on this diet. Yes, as a whole, it's moving the community forward, but things like this, where you have an organization within your community that takes the initiative to go behind the scene, see your need, and go behind the scene, and work hard, not boasting, not bragging about it, just out there working hard to do it, and that is why we are here today. And for that, the Innovation Black Chamber, your leadership, Mr. Russell, your officers, and also the members, thank you. Thank you for what you have done. Sir, Mr. Johnson, several things that you said. First of all, we know that there's a need for a grocery store. And my first question is the probability. And the second question was, how much would the city of Colleen have to invest in order to get a grocery store on the north side? But as you was doing your presentation, you made mention of nonprofit organizations and also for-profit organizations are needed to make this happen. Could you first tell me, is it the feasibility of this happening in Colleen? And if so, explain how the nonprofit and for-profit has to play into this to make this happen?
Yes, ma'am. So I want to just make sure I'm answering your question. You're asking, what is the feasibility of the for-profit and the nonprofit coming to Colleen?
The grocery store first, but from what I'm understanding you to say, in order for it to be successful, you have to have the nonprofit side and also for-profit organizations along with the grocery store to be successful, unless I misunderstood you.
Yes, ma'am. On the grocery store side, we're in a food co-op, AWG, the same as Mr. Grant that came and that met with Mr. Ronnie. And Reesers has 17 grocery stores here. They are on a higher end, kind of like HEB as well. Been to HEB, I love it, there in Houston. And so we don't have the overhead or the management fees that are associated with a larger grocer. And so we would need to complete a market study that Mr. Grant would, will talk about with AWG as our food co-op partner, to make sure that the demographics, which are similar to North Tulsa, are in alignment from a weekly sales, because when you're in a food co-op, you want to make sure that you have the blessing of your food distributor, so that way they're not putting their name on something that is not sustainable. And so in this case, we would do a market study with AWG, associated wholesale grocers that we're already a co-op member of. And from a nonprofit perspective, we don't believe that we have all of the answers. We know that we have a proven model. Tomorrow is actually, we turned two years old, it's our second birthday, May 17. But we know that we've had systems and infrastructures in place, but we want to come alongside the city of Colleen, the leadership, and really the community, to see a need and meet it, and find a hurt and heal it. But we can't do that by projecting all of our ideas. We do that alongside. In Tulsa, we have done many town hall meetings leading up to the opening of Oasis, so that way it was a community grocery store, not just an A.J. grocery store. So that would be one of the many steps that we would do in making sure companies that believe in eradicating food deserts, that believe in public health, that believe in transportation and medical and broadband, and trying to really transform the city of Colleen like they have done and are continuing to do here in the city of Tulsa, those relationships and bridges would be one that we would lay on Mr. Ronnie and you all, as the leadership to ensure that we're providing the residents of North Colleen with the best opportunities and values for sustainability.
Thank you for that. So what I'm understanding you to say is that in order for Oasis to be successful, the other nonprofit organizations, like you stated, transportation, getting the community involved, because I know all businesses are about profit, and that's the only way you can sustain. So it makes sense to get everyone involved and on board in order to make this grocery store successful. But you have to do a study first to see, because we have another partner, and I'm assuming distributor, that they're a part of this process too, to see the feasibility, if they will make a profit, or if it's okay to make that drive here to bring the items that are needed to fill the grocery store. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, great. All right. With that being said, Mr. Russell, would you like to add anything before I open it up to council?
Yes, ma'am. For the need of Oasis here in the city of Colleen, how we see it is the grocery store would then draw in additional commercial activity and potential, attracting further businesses and investments in the area. Since we was told that, well, told that we was going to have this presentation, I received several phone calls of people interested in bringing other stores in the area. So that part is definitely actively taking place, and the economic stimulation can create a positive cycle of growth and economic prosperity in the community. So the proposal, as far as location, although that we've been looking at two city-owned locations, we, of course, yield to the location of the city, that the city feels like what's best for the citizens and the economic growth and prosperity. And the construction of this grocery store is definitely in line with the comprehensive plan and the improvement of the walkability of Ransier and the upgrade of the sidewalks as well, thus in turn creating a healthier and much more vibrant community, because, of course, when the sidewalks of Ransier takes place, it now gives the community more access of actually walking down and going to the grocery store as well. So two of the things that we're looking at, which I'm glad you had brought it up, the steps requiring to, for the implementation of the Oasis Fresh Market here in Colleen. The request, of course, is going to be, which I know last week, that, well, I think it was last week or the week before, when you created the food, the grocery store initiative funds.
The $92,000-plus.
Yes, ma'am. So the request is to use the city grocery store initiative funds to invest in the grocery market research study. Of course, the membership that Mr. A.J. is with, which is AWG, the Associate Wholesale Grocer, which he already has a pre-existing relationship with, and have also found an Antalics, which is similar to AWG, which is in the state of Texas, in urban Texas, which they pretty much do the same thing, the study, the data, and the market research to ensure that this does make sense for all parties overall. And also for the initial construction feasibility study, for that's the construction side. And when I did the research as far as... And when I did the research as far as the AWG, the grocery market research, that's going to run roughly around twenty-seven hundred dollars just to do the grocery uh, market research for that. But I've also reached out to Mr. Patrick of Blessed Properties. Um, and the initial construction feasibility studies, he can speak more on that, on what does that initial uh, uh, construction feasibility study look like? Um, he can speak on that.
Yes, sir. So I just want to get a clear understanding. So a feasibility study has to be first and you also mentioned a research study. Would that be also the feasibility study in one? Okay. Did you have a price on that?
Um, there's two. There's a grocery market study, that's one. And then the uh, initial construction feasibility study. Because with the initial construction, again, he can speak more on that. With the initial construction feasibility study, that's how much would it cost to do the, the, um, do the research on the roadways and, and stuff like that? Because if you're going down Ransier, it's just street. But now when you're adding in the grocery store, there are more things that's going to be involved in making a right turn to go in a grocery store. But again, uh, Mr. Pat, Mr. Patrick can speak better on that.
Yes, sir. So on the grocery market study, how much is that?
That's roughly around twenty-seven hundred.
And the initial construction feasibility study, how much is that?
Oh.
Uh, Bless, Bless Property, sir? Is that all, Mr. Russell, that will be needed to get this started? Okay, so we have twenty-seven hundred. Good evening, sir, how are you doing?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Uh, the initial uh, budget fees for the feasibility study itself, uh, bottom line upfront is thirty-five thousand dollars. This includes the scope of services for the traffic impact analysis and concept plan. As Mr. Russell was uh, speaking on, uh, this allows for the development and the consideration uh, for Ransier and Thirty-Eighth, that intersection, if that's going to be the location. Uh, this may include right turn lanes and center uh, and/or center turn lanes into the existing infrastructure. Uh, the concept plan, uh, an initial concept plan will be developed uh, for uh, review and approval. Uh, considerations will be, of course be taken, uh, taken in for what's required of this, uh, from the city uh, per the property code. Uh, property boundaries, ingress, egress, parking layout, existing and proposed storm drainage uh, conveyance and detention facilities, existing and proposed water and sewer utilities, fire department requirements, uh, landscaping requirements, uh, minimum site improvements as required per city code. It also includes preliminary field investigation to determine existing sewer infrastructure, depth and location and feasibility of the service areas that can be uh, gravity sewed based on topography. This does not include, uh, this budget does not include uh, any architectural renderings or layouts of the proposed grocery store or additional retail or restaurant lease spaces, if those are included.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Russell. So we had other uh, grocers to come to our area to uh, bill in that area. And um, one of the things my concern about is public work. Have you spoken to public work uh, director, executive director, the CFTs things are not already put in place? Cause I don't think, uh, Mr. Kegel can correct me if I'm wrong, that they had to do a feasibility study uh, over in that area. Unless there's something that you, you need more than, I know it's more than just a basic grocery store. Uh, it's going to be big, I'm very excited about it. So, uh, Mr. Kegel, and I'm gonna get back to you, Mr. Russell, can you shine in on that?
Sure. I, I think a lot of what was just discussed has been done, except it was done by a private developer and the city doesn't, we don't have access to that.
Okay. All right. So there is a need for us to do that again. That's great. And Mr. Russell, what I'm trying to do, cause see, I'm trying to get a motion of direction. Uh, I don't, I'm not the kind of person to just sit around and continue to talk. This is the closest we, well, we don't got closer, but uh, my only concern is, is the grocery store is needed, but there are so many other partners connected to this. And if one part failed, then the whole thing, it fails. So talk to me more about how this play, how many partners is in play with this uh, in order for us to get a grocery store?
Uh, so for me talking and thinking as well as when, when I had a meeting with uh, Mr. AJ, we have to lead a hundred percent specifically on the grocery store itself, because that's the need uh, here in the city. Um, I did have a meeting with Mr. um, Aaron Dimmerson, who is a commissioner for TWC. Um, Mr. Dimmerson also uh, said that he will um, pretty much assist with the conversations of bringing Texas SNAP, because the duo is dealing with Oklahoma. But Mr. Emerson.
Can you explain Texas SNAP?
So food stamps.
Okay, oh, food stamps, okay.
Correct, yes, ma'am. So because Oasis is in Oklahoma, they do the SNAP in Oklahoma. So in the state of Texas, now that, that is those, those services that he have, those wraparound nonprofit services. So now from uh, Mr. Dimmerson providing access to get that ball rolling. So that's one of those uh, uh, things to add leverage. Um, also, Mr. Dimmerson talked about another program, which is called Texas Works. And that program with Texas Works to where he can, he can then hire uh, um, uh, people with higher wages. And what, what the uh, Texas Department, Texas Workforce uh, Commission would do. So what happens is, say you're, you're a um, a cashier, you will get an hourly wage of twenty dollars an hour. But what uh, Mr. Dimmerson office would do, they will reimburse Mr., uh, they will reimburse Oasis ten dollars of that twenty dollars. So you would have higher wages, uh, higher wage employees working in the grocery store, which would then in turn to allow them to provide access to more programs for the youth and as well as provide more access to them to either stay in, stay in business if they're small business owners. Uh, if you, um, like, those are, those are some of the things that, that I found and looked for. Again, I think approaching this from a grocer's perspective and getting those things. I think as far as with the food desert initiative, um, with the city taking on the twenty-seven hundred, I'm not sure what the EDC is interested, is interested in doing. I think the EDC uh, possibly with the initial construction feasibility study, because that's a part of economic development. So instead of just coming to the city, asking the city, I think we should spread the wealth. Because if we're involved with creating something new for the city, then everybody should have skin in the game uh, when it comes to the ask. So I think ask city, the grocery feasibility, I mean, the grocery market study and, and the initial construction is to ask EDC to, to take that on.
Okay. So that is uh, forty-two thousand dollars. That's the thirty-five thousand for your um, initial, initial uh, feasibility study and also for the grocery market is twenty-seven hundred. But if KEDC does not support that, I still think a motion of direction should be made by the council. I'm just recommending it, uh, that that money, that thirty-seven, that forty-two thousand be set aside just in case KEDC uh, will not be able to support that part. I'm just saying, I'm not saying they will or may, cause I know you met with them and you may have more knowledge on it than I do. And so I don't know. But at the same token, we have to get the ball moving.
Yes, ma'am.
In the right direction to see if it's even feasible to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't want the residents to see this as they get their hopes up again and here we go and we let them down. So here we have the opportunity, this council have always fought for it, every member up here to thought for, um, to make sure we have a grocery store in that area. So I'm gonna turn it over to uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Thank you for presenting, Mr. AJ. We appreciate you for considering the city of Colleen. This is a huge step in the right direction for, you know, for our city and um, your transparency and being, you know, public and explaining this to our citizens as to what the options are and how the, the process works. Um, so you mentioned earlier, there's a component of your model that some people were concerned about sustainability and ROI and you, your store model is under twenty thousand square feet, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We built a grocery store, uh, sixteen thousand five hundred square feet is our, is our floor plan.
Okay.
So a small back room, uh, and a, and a small sales floor.
So in general terms, when you start talking about ROI and overhead and cost, um, would you say that this is what allows you to maintain your affordability factor for the constituents? Cause there's some concern that they might not be able to afford the groceries. But because of your model, would you say that that's a contributing factor to them being able to support and sustain shopping at your store?
Yes, ma'am, most definitely. And compared to your larger chain grocery stores that have a sixty to eighty thousand square foot grocery store with over a hundred thousand uh, barcodes or SKUs, we are a sixteen thousand square foot grocery store uh, with roughly about ten thousand SKUs. And so that's where we're able to have low overhead, but pay high wage, higher wages, uh, low number of employees and higher wages, lesser, um, lower expenses, lower property taxes. And so all of the combined efforts uh, makes us a little bit more nimble and able to move without that big overhead and big store.
And when you're talking about distribution, um, is AWG the distributor for, for Oasis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then AWC would, uh, AWG, I'm sorry, would then ultimately be distributing within Texas as well as the plan?
Yes, ma'am. Unless there, I know, uh, Mr. Ronnie and I have talked about a potential closer partner uh, that would then even save more dollars on the expense side, which that would of course be a lot better.
Right. Yeah, thank you so very much again. Um, there's a lot of questions, but I just want to commend everyone for your efforts, hard work and the fact that um, we are working diligently to solve the need that we have here in the city of Colleen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Russell, the feasibility study and the grocery study, anything else?
Um, I think was what is really going to be a very significance, uh, to be significant. It was already approved that the senior living on WS Young is going to be uh, uh, built. With the services that Oasis offer, which is the senior, uh, at no cost to them to come and pick them up and take them to the grocery store. The grocery store is within that two mile radius of where the, the WS Young, um, senior living is going to be. So instead of them, someone bringing them food and dropping them off, they can pick them up to get them out and give them fresh air and meeting new people and taking them to Oasis. So I, I think this is definitely a good fit.
Yes, sir. And what I'm hearing you to say also, once I read my notes, is that the, the Oasis store, it's a community store for the city of Colleen. So you really want everybody to come and participate uh, in um, services over there.
Right. And I, I did the math with over forty-eight thousand citizens, we're just talking in the zip code of four one, four two. If they just spend fifty dollars a month at Oasis, that's over two point, two point one or two point three million dollars, just fifty dollars. So it can sustain and last a very long time.
Yes, sir. And I know you're trying to get the um, food stamp services approved for that grocery store. But for individuals that are not on food stamps, uh, is it cost effective for them that live in that area that may not be on food stamp? Cause you know how that system works? You can be off two pennies and you really need food stamps and you won't, that's just the way it works and you won't receive it. Will they be able to afford the food?
I would say yes, because also as they provide access to, to purchasing more food, that gives them more opportunity to have rental assistance paid out and medical assistance and emergency home assistance. So it's, it's pretty holistic. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilwoman, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim, call up.
Mr. Russell.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm thinking now that with all our service programs in the area, our WIC program, our SNAP programs, we've got to come to the table.
Okay.
So that we can understand. So some kind of way, we're going to have to come to the table. But at the same time, I don't want us to lose out on this opportunity. And the only way that we cannot do this, if we do, as the mayor has asked us to, uh, I move, I'm gonna make a motion of direction. And it's with the funding that we discussed on last week. So the motion of direction is to, we cannot put money on the side, but we can stipulate by holding the forty-two thousand dollars from the, for the grocery store funding for feasibility, the feasibility study and grocery market study. Because those are the two important things that we have to get done. So I think that if we get this done, that's my motion.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me get your motion right. So I'm understanding you to say that the nine hundred, ninety-two thousand plus uh, op of funding that we set aside last week, you want to take forty-two thousand of that and put it on hold for the feasibility study and also the market, uh,
Grocery market.
Grocery market study.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I get a second to that motion of direction? Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Second.
All in, uh, council member board?
Madam Mayor, I just had two questions uh, before I cast the vote. Uh, first of all, thank you all for uh, this initiative and being consistent with it. Uh, that's to be noted. Uh, just two quick questions. Uh, the proposed location, has that been established?
Uh, no. That's where we say we'll yield to the city, to, to what they feel is the best area for the citizens in that area.
Understood. Uh, second question, uh, it was mentioned, uh, the low, the lower number of SKUs. Uh, would that potentially limit the access to particular staples?
Mr. Johnson?
No, sir.
He said no, sir.
Okay. So I'm assuming, you know, by default, fruits, vegetables, those are primary and then the rest then?
Oh, for, for sure. I, that, it's within our name, Oasis Fresh Market. We, we know that we can't change an underserved community without fresh produce and fresh vegetables uh, and giving everyone the equitable access that most underserved communities don't have. And so that, that's our primary. Our mission is to eradicate food deserts by bringing fresh and healthy access for all. So yes, sir.
And thank you for verifying that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, you're welcome. Uh, Mr. Russell, once we get through the feasibility study and the grocery market study, uh, the cost to bill?
Right. That's when we'll come, that's when we'll come back because, and because that's the initial construction feasibility study. So now, because he already has a model that he did in Tulsa, so then it will be bringing his floor plan that he already has. So then that uh, then comes in and then it gets sent with, sit down and they construct and seeing what it would completely cost. Because the, the grocery market study, that's just going to show like, what does it look like? How much does he need to make and stuff like that? But the construction side is going to say, it's going to cost X amount of dollars to create this. And then that's where we go into closed session and talk about tax abatement uh, for sales tax and property and stuff like that.
Yes, sir. So I know that you have, um, Mr. Kegel and you, Mr. Russell, get together and decide on, cause this money will be on hold.
Okay.
Cause uh, you have to have a location where you want to have the study conducted, so.
I can tell you what I want.
Uh, yes, sir. Well, we go, we, I'm not putting the counts on that count as far right now. But we have the money. So uh, uh, Mr. Kegel, you, you have something you want to say? So the two sites that you stated.
Yes, ma'am.
Get with him and he decide and then from there you can move forward um, with that, uh, depending on the vote.
Yes, ma'am.
So I am all for it and I think it's a great idea. So council, uh, all in favor of motion of direction? Yes, all opposed, no? The motion of direction carries for the zero. Thank you, council, so much. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Russell, uh, once again and Mr. Johnson, we thank you, uh, the council for everything you do, your officers, uh, the Innovation Back Chamber and also your members. And we're looking forward, Mr. Johnson, hoping that this feasibility study and this grocery market study uh, go in our favor. Because there is a desperate need uh, for a grocery store on the north side of Colleen. Once again, I thank you both and I thank you Innovation Back Chamber for all you do for our community. Thank you. Moving on, going to our citizen comments. Uh, you can only discuss items that are on the agenda. You can only discuss items that are on. You can only discuss items that are on the agenda. You only have four minutes and when your four minutes is up, please, uh, take your seat. Uh, Melissa Brown. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
I'd like to discuss with you the amendments, the economic development policy and seventy thousand dollars to Centex, uh, ARC. KDC strategic plan that is included in the edit should be reviewed and approved by the city council, not something that's just created by the board and then never discussed here or in public. Should also be used as a guide for approving incentives, the same way our strategic plans guide CIPs and development. From the, the revisions, I would ask why would KDC continue to put an emphasis on attracting only, uh, primarily retail and service jobs? When manufacturing, distribution and technology should be the primary targeted businesses. We have no problem bringing in retail or restaurants or service jobs. You can see that with all the, the strip malls that are going up. The audit that would be required, will that be made available to the public? And if so, is that something that should be added to this document? Greater Colleen Chamber of Commerce has long benefited from the many, money provided by the city of Colleen to pay employees and do advertising and printing for KDC. How will those funds equitably benefit each chamber, especially when they don't have a seat at the table, literally or figuratively? The economic development, or the, I'm sorry, the executive director and any staff should be paid through the city instead of one specific chamber. The council should consider restructuring the board at this time also. KIF doesn't have a claim on what happens in the business park just because of a bank note. I have a mortgage, but my mortgage company doesn't get to tell me what I do with my house. Any more than KIF should get a vote on what KDC does, just because they own the note on the business park. In regard to Centex, uh, ARC or alcoholic rehab, the city council decided that all ARPA funds must remain in the city of Colleen. There were several worthy projects that we turned down because they were not in the city limits. Centex is in Temple. This professional service agreement has already been in place for two months, paying twenty thousand dollars for one person. Uh, that will be anywhere between sixty and ninety days at a maximum. When this was last up for discussion, even though the council approved setting that money to the side, it was supposed to be just that, set to the side and no money was going, supposed to go to this program before the council approved it. But here we are, supporting a nonprofit in another city, paying them a contract to do what they are established to do anyway. Well, we, we will be paying seventy thousand a year to help a maximum of six men a year and men only, since they don't assist women, and as few as just this one person. We pay the seventy regardless. What is the post-inpatient plan? With no established halfway house, we do not set these individuals up for success. The county judge recently said Colleen and Temple are planning on incorporating inpatient rehabs in their city plans, leaving the diversion building open for potential to other plans. This is disorganized, not fully thought out, has no metrics for success. The organization has a beautiful facility, but their sixty to ninety day program is combined with encouraging clients to work instead of concentrating on their sobriety. This is one more deficient cog in the homeless plan that puts people before, or money before people, and that is cruel. That is inhumane, that has been listed as being overly expensive, inhumane, and without caring for those people who are most vulnerable, according to numerous sources who have worked with the same company, the same cities who have this plan in place. This is the same reason that we don't have benches in downtown anymore. Because it's not about being kind or giving heart or helps to homeless. This is about getting them out of sight and out of mind, and the seventy thousand dollars is not going to help the people who need it most.
Thank you. Michael Fornino. Good evening. You have four minutes.
Uh, with regard to the grocery store issue, uh, to Mr. Russell and Johnson, they seem to have a well-articulated plan. But why stop at just one grocery store? Is that there was some, some concern, some concern about whether or not, you know, it could be a sustainable venture or not. But why, why focus on just one grocery store? Successful business thrives on competition and variety. I, Ms. Gonzalez will remember that I very aggressively defended her and advocated for her district for the grocery store. But why stop at just one? I mean, what was the figure? It was fifty thousand people on the north side of Colleen? One grocery store? Yeah, I'm sure that Oasis would appreciate the business from fifty thousand potential customers, but why stop just there? Uh, doing some, some homework and research, I had never realized that Brookshures and Brookshire Brothers were two separate companies. They split a hundred years ago. So, I mean, I don't know which or either if we've courted as far as maybe attracting them. I mean, Hartswood, Texas, I mean, they're a Texas-based company, and Tyler and Lufkin, uh, respectively. Uh, and they, with their locations as it is, they have locations all along the I thirty-five corridor and the interstate routes along, uh, three seventeen coming down this way. So it wouldn't be that much of a change on their supply chain or their delivery routes. I'm just offering up other solutions. I mean, why stop at one? Think big. If we can set aside, uh, money for the, the study, double it so that we do have all the, all the preparations and sort of know-how to get another grocery store. I mean, why, why stop at just one? I mean, if this is set aside money at a hundred thousand, whether they bring it up to what, eighty-four thousand? If I was tracking on the math correctly, I'm, I'm doubling that. So I mean, still leaves some, at least, leave some change be, you know, of that hundred thousand, not spending all of it. But I mean, I think that a lot of citizens here would agree that over the years, we've spent a lot of odd money in a lot of places that we don't agree. But I mean, for something like this, by all means, you know, get, get Oasis going up, get Aldi. Uh, I live in Willow Springs, so I mean, I have, I, I guess you could say a luxury where I take it for granted that both HEBs are within the stone's throw of me, Aldi, a neighborhood market, and two Walmarts. I mean, that, that's an absolute luxury that the north side doesn't have. So court more businesses to come in. And I just have a question with regard to the roads on here, and I'm sure that Mr. Boyd would probably have it. What is the schedule for, um, Willow Springs Road and Watercrest especially? Folks have been asking me in my neighborhood and I was like, I, I just don't know what the schedule is on that.
Madam Mayor, can I respond? Thank you for that. Uh, this is a presentation the staff is going to give towards the end of the meeting, uh, with a more definite timeline, from my understanding. And I do share some concerns as well about the, uh, start of the construction.
Okay. I just, I noticed that the Clear Creek and, you know, all the other roads and Robinette especially came out exceptionally well. I mean, I live kind of on the edge between Mrs. Cobb's district and yours, and those are roads utilized by me. I mean, they came out well. I'm just curious when that was going to happen. But again, going back to the grocery store, Oasis seems to have a well-articulated plan, but let's not rely solely on that. Because if there's any hitches in the system, we need to get ahead of that. And, and, okay, if Oasis is delayed, doesn't mean that we can't have another project already in motion. I was like, double down, double the money, have, you know, say, hey, if somebody comes in and say, hey, we already have the money set aside for a study, let's get it done. And that way, the people are served and, you know, any, any petty differences or things that prevented grocery store from getting built in the past, as the other two closed down, we can just avoid those and just steamroll right through it. I think that citizens of Colleen, especially the north side of Colleen, would be better served and better benefited with nutrient-dense, healthy food. Thank you.
Thank you. Can, uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I just wanted to respond to the gentleman's, um, statement. Um, you know, we've talked before about wheels that are in motion that sometimes we can't see. And so there's been conversation, um, for quite some time. And we, twenty nineteen is a long time, right? For, um, us to have been without a grocery store in this area. We've courted, um, many stores, many opportunities. We've had private citizens explore options to bring a grocery in here. And some of those panned out, some of those unfortunately did not. Um, we're thankful that we have Oasis here, and there's opportunity for them to expand as well, which will part, I'm sure will be part of their study. So thank you for your statement. But those wheels, you might not see them, but they are in motion.
Thank you. And we have to focus on one grocery store at a time. And once we get this one up and running and making sure that the people on the north side are taken care of, we're going to be in a good place after that. Candice, Candice Cooper? I know. Come on up here and say your name right. We're playing. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protim, uh, council and city staff. Uh, my name is Candice Cooper. I'm the marketing chair for the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce, um, and a regular attendee, um, of these meetings. Um, and to speak to Ms. Jessica's, uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez's point in question to the, uh, questions that the gentleman stated. Like you said, twenty nineteen is a long time. October twenty nineteen for HEB, August for IGA. Um, and if you're a regular attendee of these council meetings, you'll, would have been here for the EDC's presentations of all the grocery stores and the times that they have tried to attract someone into this area. Um, but I think to the point of the business model of that grocery store, Oasis, and again, the, the leadership of our chamber president in taking that personally. Um, like you said, things happening in the background that you aren't aware of and how complicated it really is to bring in the logistics of opening a grocery store. And so the fact that there is a company that not only wants to provide healthy options as far as food, but all of the logistics behind the nonprofit aspect. This grocery store will answer so many questions for District One as well as the rest of the city. Because not just District One has problems with food services or that are on food stamps. And so when we talk about higher paying wages for North Colleen, that is an economic push for the city. When we talk about, um, the, the provision of rides for the senior citizens who a large portion of the aging, uh, area in our city live in North Colleen. So we're really talking about offering a very massive, um, approach to building this side of Colleen as well as the tourist fund being activated to, uh, start the renovation process of, uh, the city of, uh, the street of Ransier. So we're really talking about injecting funds into an area as well as bringing this grocery store. And so when you put an asset like that in that area, that the property values are going to increase. Therefore, residents have a better opportunity to, again, raise their funds, you know, raise their children in a healthier environment. We saw the city police here today being recognized. Answering those questions as far as the holistic approach makes it as to where maybe the police department doesn't have to keep listing more police officers, you know, um, dying in line of duty. We have a safer environment. We have healthier homes, which again will grow the city. So when we know that we have other grocery stores that are in the area and they've had four years to answer the question of how to, why is there not a, a grocery store in North Colleen? HEB left and then they entered a contract for their, their facility that no other grocery store could be put into that location. So their str, their strategy behind why there's no grocery store. And so again, I want to commend the leadership that I have, um, and just in my mentors for this community. Again, in answering that question on why we need this company to come in and why we do need to take the aggressive approach in, um, activating this initiative. So I want to thank you guys again for being open to going ahead and moving forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Madam Mayor Nash King and council city members and Mayor Protim. I thank you for, uh, this opportunity to have your ear. I stand before you today asking that you consider, uh, the Oasis Fresh Market Venture as a viable option for addressing North Colleen's food ins, insensibility. I have conversed with some of you during the past six months regarding this issue. Um, as I reviewed this organization's website, uh, their services and programs seem to be able to provide great benefits to the community. I als, always felt that there were, that the community's need, uh, would have be, would be filled by a nonprofit. Having partners who are aware that the meeting the community's need is just as valuable as the bottom line is what will leverage the odds of success. I know that the city council efforts in addressing this issue have been ongoing. Um, I do strongly suggest that, uh, the city consider collaborating with, uh, Mr. Andrew Johnson and, uh, Mr. Ronnie as well as the, uh, Oasis Fresh Venture. Because, uh, as you can see, it's, they're the, they're the ones that are here, um, giving us an option and a choice and still, um, providing, um, some kind of avenue for North Colleen, uh, to get those needs that it needs. Mr. Ronnie did suggest that, uh, there should be maybe three locations. So he did take in consideration the fact that one store was not enough. I do understand competition. If you have a business mindset, it's supposed to benefit the consumer. But if you don't have people willing to come in to compete and just put their feet in the neighborhood, you can't have that competition. But yet we have Oasis here trying to do so. So, um, I do, once again, strongly recommend the collaboration. I am very happy that the city is deciding to use funds to get their own analysis so that this, the council doesn't have to go back again, um, researching what's needed for the North Colleen district. Uh, so that they have that information accessible to them, just in case whatever new venture pops up regarding the grocery store, um, that information is available to you. Um, so that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Jupiter? Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. I rise, of course, in support of the Oasis. But before I begin, I have, uh, two concerns. One, the first problem is how do I follow IBCC, Mr. Ronnie Russell, and the presentation that they presented here today? And that's problem number one. Problem number two, it's not my problem. So I rise here because, uh, I know Ronnie and Ronnie and I, we go way back, you know, and this issue started in twenty twenty-one. See, in twenty twenty-one, we realized that there was a big problem in that area. And those people needed the same resources that I have. You know, I get ticked off. I don't know about you, but if I go to Walmart and my timing is off and they're closed, I am mad, right? Because I'm used to that convenience. I get everything that I need when I go to Walmart because I live on the other side of town. These folks have been living in that location since twenty nineteen. And if I'm hungry and I want to get something to eat and I stop by the gas station or I stop by the dollar store, I'm paying more for less, which means I'm paying more for stuff that has no nutritional value to my body. Once again, those folks are living in that area like that. And I'm so happy today, based on the vote that this council made today, to see that you are living up to your second principle of equity, which means that we could have our brothers and sisters here in Colleen have the same access to quality food and more. So I'm not going to continue to speak because it's all been said. Let's get it done.
Thank you. Gabriel, Gabriel Montabo? Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Uh, first and foremost, I want to congratulate all the newly elected, uh, city council members. And first and foremost, I want to thank, uh, from the bottom of my heart to the Innovation Black Chamber of Commerce for, uh, their taking the lead on bringing a grocery store here to Colleen. But, you know, I, I, I look at it from this standpoint. You know, I love the mission, the vision, all of the things that this grocery store and it's, it's commendable. Everything that they're doing for, uh, citizens that, in the area that they service. But, you know, I come from a business background and, you know, I know that Councilwoman Jessica Gonzalez had mentioned that this has been, um, in the works for a while. So I guess my first question would be, um, how long has this specific grocery store, uh, thought about, you know, potentially coming here? I know that, uh, they had spoken with Mr. Russell, but, you know, um, how long has that been in the work? And then, you know, to be honest with you, I think a lot of times we have to be completely honest with the residents of District One. And, you know, I like the... And, you know, I like the vision, but how is it that they're going to do it? I know that he mentioned that there were specific federal funding. Could he elaborate or come to in person to the city council chamber so he can elaborate and tell us exactly how is it that they make that work? Because it's beautiful, but I want to know exactly how is it? And for those of you that don't know, the grocery store industry has the thinnest margins, 1% to 3% nationally. So, you know, this presentation has raised more questions than it has answers. And I'm going to just be honest. And so, you know, I would like this grocery store to come in and I thank you for the council for having a motion in a direction. But I would like to see more specific on how exactly is it that they do it? And, you know, that would have my full support and I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And to answer your question, is the feasibility study has to be done and the grocery market study has to be done to see if it's even feasible for us to have it on that side? So those are some things. How long it's been in work, I'm not sure. But thank you for your comments. Regardless of the timeline, I think it's very important that from this day forward that we move on. And that's a good question. Mr. Russell, how long has this been in the play? You said it. I just don't remember because I was focused on dollar signs.
2021, after Reesers connected me to Mr. AJ.
Okay.
So we've been working on it for a while.
So 2021, okay. That answered the question, sir. So as we move forward... Oh, did you want to say some council? Okay. So as we move forward, there was one more thing I wanted to address. The Centec Alcohol and Rehabilitation Center. I went and visited along with the Communication Director, Janelle Ford, and Mr. Marcus from Communication Department. And one of the things that they did say, that they're not only serving men, but they're trying to work toward a way to serve women too. So this facility would not only just accommodate men, but also they're working on the goal to accommodate women also. It's very important, and I just want to elaborate on that. We always say that we want to make a change and impact our community. And the only way we're going to do that, when a person is down on their luck, because it could be any one of us today, you could be $1 away or $100 from being in a situation where you need services. So we don't frown down on individuals. And I do understand that this facility is in central Texas. But if we had a facility in Colleen, Harker Heights, some other area, we would be able to utilize that. So we're giving individuals that may have a problem with addiction or some kind of habit that they're really trying hard to work. And I commend our Assistant City Manager, Mrs. Singh, and her team for all of the hard work to make this happen. So invest in $70,000, $100,000, or $200,000 in trying to get someone cleaned up so they can start their life all over. And we have all the programs put in place to assist them, to get jobs, to make their lives better. I think it's worth the investment because every life is worth saving. Assistant City Manager Singh, do you have anything you would like to say, ma'am?
No, ma'am. The item's not on consent, so I'll go through a brief presentation at that time. But I think you answered the majority of the questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. With that being said, did I miss anyone else that turned in their citizen comment form and I overlooked it? All right, Madam Secretary.
DS 23050, receive Arts Commission Annual Report.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Tangeling, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening, council members. This item is to present fiscal year 2022 annual report for the Arts Commission. Mr. John Miller is here. He is the chairperson for the Arts Commission.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Miller? Good evening, sir. Good to see you again.
Good evening. Hello, new council members and old council members too, Madam Mayor.
Sir.
You want me to work this? Okay. Here we go. This is the Arts Commission Annual Report for Fiscal Year 22 and 23. It worked, okay. Brief summary, the City of Colleen Code Ordnance requires the Arts Commission to submit an annual advisory report with recommendations to advance art and culture within the city and make recommendations on long-range goals for development of tourism and the convention and hotel industry through the use of funding for the arts. See, that didn't work. Okay. This is a brief history of what we were allotted to spend. And 2021, as you can see, to 2023, the requirement is growing. In 2022, we, you know, that was during the COVID years and we see reduced funding. But luckily, ARPA stepped in and was able to make the difference. And so in 2023, we're asking for the same types of funding. We have a lot of projected expenses. And so this year for the 2024, we're asking for $3,000, excuse me, We have a robust marketing campaign through social media, local hotels, advertising with our community partners. We have annual cultural arts program and competition showcasing artists in the local area. We revamped grant application workshops and processes and added a second date for the grant application workshop. This was to accommodate people who wanted to apply for a grant. We always are reaching out to the grantees and the community to have them apply for the money that you guys give us. We're paid through the hotel, a portion of the hotel motel tax. And that funding is in great demand as we bring things like Viva La Arts and other cultural events to the city. Oh, it ended? Was it supposed to? Wait, I think it was, I thought it was one more.
That's it, sir.
That's it? I thought it was one more slide after that.
Thank you once again for coming in. And one of the things that you say you are requesting for funding is $313,461.
Correct.
All right. Thank you so much, sir.
All right. Any questions from the council?
No, sir. Thank you. We do have one late caller. Mayor Pro Tem called.
Sir, as always, you know, I love the Arts Commission. As an ex-commissioner of arts, you're doing, you all are doing a great job.
Thank you.
And you're bringing revenue as well as activities. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, sir, for all you do in your community. Thank you. Madam Secretary, items for, I'm sorry, discuss items for a regular city council meeting on May 23, 2023. Consent agenda. Counsel, you have two times to speak for five minutes. Madam Secretary.
MN 23009, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of April 11, 2023. MN 23010, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of April 25, 2023. RS 23082, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for the design coordination of the Skylark Field Automated Weather Observation System relocation in the amount of $73,900. RS 23084, consider a memorandum resolution amending the uniform rental agreement with Centos for an additional four-year term in an amount of $200,000 for FY 2023.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Resolutions, council, you have five minutes to speak, two times each. Madam Secretary.
RS 23085, consider a memorandum resolution approving amendments to the economic development policy.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Revell? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Pro Tem, City Council and City Manager. The economic development policy has been in place since 2019 and we're making some proposed updates to the economic development policy. As you can see here, this policy really guides all the decision-making and how we, all the movements related to economic development, even including that associated with the Colleen Economic Development Committee. It also focuses on where incentives are available, makes that very clear. And as I said, the policy has been in place since 2019. It was last amended in 2021. The specific items that we would like to update associated with the policy are noted on the slide here. There is a definition or a line item in the policy that deals with targeted investment areas. We want to add North Colleen as one of those areas. Also, it clarifies KDC's role as being the lead economic development partner and also responsible for the strategic economic development planning, as noted. It also expands the list of partners. Some of that was implicit, but we wanted to make sure that that was very clear and the list of partners are noted in the third bullet. It also clarifies what incentives are offered by the city and what incentives are offered by KDC. And then also, it puts a requirement in place that we, that the city receive information associated with the financial activities done with KDC in time in order for the city to perform its annual audit. The alternatives that the council have are so noted on the slide and we're recommending approval of that the council would adopt this policy at the appropriate time, as presented.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Revell with the audit. Are you saying is the process will be moved up?
So the city's process will stay the same, but we're just trying to make sure that, structurally speaking or specifically, that we receive information from KDC in time such that the city's audit can be completed in a timely manner.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. There are no questions of you. Madam Secretary.
RS 23086, consider a memorandum resolution amending the professional services agreement with Centex Alcohol and Rehabilitation Center to not exceed an amount of $70,000.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Singh, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item before you is to increase an existing agreement with Centex ARC to go from $20,000 to a total of $70,000. So a little bit of background on this item. The city council back in December appropriated $70,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funding to be used for substance abuse counseling and treatment, and this was in support of the homelessness and mental health strategic plan. In March, we had a client that was in need of services. And so in order to get them started, we went ahead and initiated the original agreement so that we could go ahead and get started on that. As you know, staff can't spend more than $50,000 without council's approval. So that's why the rest of it is here for you today. The agreement includes comprehensive services for substance use counseling and treatment. We would pay them $195 a day whenever we have a client that's there receiving treatment. Individuals will be identified by our hot team and the agreement will be used to treat individuals who are either homeless, at risk of becoming homeless, and people who don't have insurance. Whenever they have insurance, that would be billed there first. So this is people who don't, wouldn't otherwise have this opportunity. They currently only treat men, but they are in the process of extending their certification to be able to treat women in the upcoming months. And again, the agreement would be for not to exceed amount of $70,000. And so your alternatives tonight are to not approve the agreement or you could amend the agreement with Centex ARC to increase the total amount to $70,000. And that is what we are recommending that you do is increase that to $70,000 tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And we also have Mr. Young with Centex ARC who is here as well.
Thank you, ma'am. And I also want to recognize our homeless officer. Sir, would you raise your hand in the bag, Mr. Cruz? Thank you for your service. That's how he replaced Officer Moore. And thank you for all you do for our homeless population in the downtown Colleen area. Counsel Womacaw?
I don't know if anyone have any more conversation, but I move to approve. I'm ready to go. I mean, I'm ready to go on the bill.
Do you have a comment on this item?
Yes, ma'am. I think it's a good program and I'm glad we're going to be working that way. And we'll be ready to move soon, I hope.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Counselmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few questions. Do we have an idea how many individuals may be able to expect to receive treatment within the 70,000? I understand it's $195 a day. But if we have someone who's in there 45 days straight, I mean, what's the most bang we can get for our buck, if you will?
It really depends on the level of treatment they need. So if you do the 195 per day and 70,000, we get almost to a year of continuous service. And so we expect that we might have two people in there once. We might have one individual. There might be gaps. So I can't give you an answer about how many people exactly. We do have not to exceed 90 days per single person's treatment.
I understand. And I guess my concern remains the same in how many people we can receive this treatment, understanding how many folks are on the street that would need access to this. The next question is, would the city be expected to continue making annual allocations? Should we make the $70,000 allocation for this year?
There's no expectation to continue. This was kind of our pilot program. I think it's, we're going to find that it's very successful. The one client that we've had in there, I won't give too many details, but they have been homeless for over a decade and are about to graduate the program and have employment lined up. And so we're very pleased with how this has gone initially. But ultimately, we would need to look at funding sources for this and Arbor of Hope, that's part of what they would be in charge of doing, is to go out and get state grants or anything like that to help support these types of activities.
Sure, sure. And I as well made a visit to Centex ARC. Got to see the services they offer. I was very impressed, especially the facility. And this is important for our community. I just want, I'm hoping that we can find a way to get more treatment for individuals and find another funding source. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselmember Boyd. Assistant City Manager Singh, I have a question in reference to the $70,000. And if we have three to five people that are homeless outreach officer recommend. And with that $70,000, I was doing the question, the calculation for 45 days for $195 and I got rid of, it's like 8,000. Oh, sorry. We have to stop the meeting until Counselwoman, Mayor Pro Tem returns. Buy a minute break. Let me explain to those for your first time maybe being here. We have to have four council members on the dais at all time. And if one of them, with the mayor, so if one of them leave, then we have to halt the meeting until he or she returns to the dais. I truly apologize for this inconvenience. This may cause you... We're calling the council meeting back into session, Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
RS 23087, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of amendment number one to the professional services agreement with Pape Dawson Engineers in the amount of $75,000 for development services support.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And welcome back, Mr. Revell.
Thank you, Mayor, Council Pro Tem, Council and City Manager. This is a contract amendment request to an existing contract that we have with Pape Dawson Engineers to provide engineering-related plan review services, as noted on the slide. As you can see, this is really needed because we have staffing constraints. We lost one of our senior engineers to retirement since January of this year and working steadily to try to fill that, but had not been able to fill that position. This contract amendment would basically increase the existing contract by $75,000 with Pape Dawson Engineers. And there is sufficient funding in the professional services line item of our budget to cover it. The council has two alternatives, not approve or to approve the amendment as requested, and staff is recommended. and staff is recommending that the amendment be approved.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rebell, when you say staffing restraints, is it for the recruitment side of it? Can you use another engineer within the city? That's my first question. And the second question is, when you're hiring an engineer, is there organization that specialized just in engineers for the hiring process?
So in terms of using another engineer in the city, no, there's not one that's available. They all have tasks that they're assigned to and workloads to address that that would not be available. We have been working to try to hire, you know, through the hiring process. We've been very aggressive with that, with job fairs, with advertisement on various sites. We just haven't been as successful because nationally it's been a challenge to really fill these positions. Because it is a specialized position, you have to have a professional engineer's registration, and that's a challenge. Now, did I answer?
Yes, sir. And the other question, because it is a competitive specialty, is our, the salary competitive enough to recruit someone here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rebell. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Called me off guard there. How long do we forecast being in this position? I understand this, if you're trying to hire someone.
What this is, what this contract is anticipating, that it may last until the end of this fiscal year. But again, we're continuing to be as aggressive as we can to hire. We're engaging as many different creative practices as we can to make that happen. So we're hopeful that we can fill before the end of this fiscal year. But this contract contemplates that it could go up to the end of this fiscal year.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rebell and Councilmember Boyd. Madam Secretary.
PH 23031. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the FY 2023 annual budget of the City of Colleen to increase expenditure accounts in multiple funds.
Thank you, ma'am. The public hearing will be held on May 23, 2023. Council, you have two times each to speak for five minutes. Good evening, Mrs. Drake.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This budget amendment is for the tax reinvestment, tax increment reinvestment zone to appropriate funding for approved projects for the Skylark Field Automated Weather Observing System, also known as the AWOS relocation. This is, was approved by the TERS Board for Recommendation to Council on April 12. And this is in relation to the Anthem Park development and also the Downtown Facade Grant Program. And then we also have a budget amendment for the Solid Waste Hardware Conversion. This is due to discontinuation of vendor support. And this would be conversion, which includes replacement computer hardware for 26 residential and 16 commercial vehicles. And then additional abatement funds are needed for demolition and removal of 20 blighted and condemned structures throughout the city. And then continued care premises abatements, such as removal of junked vehicles, mowing of high weeds and grass, and other property maintenance violations. And then these would be the actual transactions. So the 150,000 would come from full-time salary savings. The Skylark AWOS location and the Downtown Facade Grants would be from the TERS fund balance. And the Solid Waste Hardware Conversion would be from the Solid Waste CIP fund balance. And our recommendation is to amend the FY 23 annual budget. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, ma'am. I have just a quick question. For the $150,000 for the code enforcement, one of the things you stated, the property management, maintenance violations. What would that be?
Yes, ma'am. So those property maintenance violations could be a variety of things. It could be issues with parking in, on the grass in the front yard. It could be high weeds and grass that's in excess of the code requirements, which is 12 inches. It could be a house that is not being well maintained, is considered to be blighted and has to be corrected. It could be a house that's actually considered to be condemned and to the point that it needs to be torn down. And then also, there could just be junk or just waste and debris that's on a property that needs to be cleared and abated.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell, for that explanation. I think that's very important. Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is going to be for planning and development as well. Thank you, by the way. Has the city already identified the, and determined the 20 buildings for demolition, as well as the properties for abatement? Have these already been identified?
Sure. So the structures associated with demolition have been identified. Those are in process. They have various points within the process, but they have been identified. The structures associated, the properties associated with abatement, we do have some that's currently in process. But this, but we, in some instances, we don't know until we know. But what we do know is we have five months left in this fiscal year, and we need money to be able to address those abatements as they come up.
For abatements. Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Rebell, one more question for you. When we're talking about the demolition of residence or structures, that most of these are homes, some of them been here for a while, that's been burnt damage throughout Colleen, and $150,000, that just don't seem like it's enough. How do you, how are you going to manage that if that's our goal, the end game?
So we believe that 150 will be sufficient based on what we currently know. We believe that, like several of those structures are actually manufactured structures. So the costs associated with demolition, though, demolishing those is a bit cheaper. But we do believe that we have sufficient funding, that this will provide sufficient funding to help meet the needs as we currently understand them.
It's the ones that you do know. But moving forward, would this be something that we will always amend to the budget every time throughout next year? If we find more structure that need to be demolished, would this be ongoing process?
In terms of happening this way, that it may happen this way again, it's hard to predict. We typically try to put enough forecasts, enough funding each time. I believe we attempted to do that with the budget this time, and that's still going through the process.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rebell and Mrs. Drake. Thank you so much. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 23035. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Paula Scoggins on behalf of James Lee, case number Z 2313, to rezone a portion of Lot 1, Block 1, Y and J addition from B5 Business District to BC1 General Business and Alcohol Sales District. The property is locally addressed as 1103 West Veterans Memorial Boulevard, Suite 104, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Rebell.
Yes, ma'am. This would be a zoning, rezoning request on this existing property that's currently zoned as B5. And the request is to rezone to this business and alcohol sales district. And the location of the property is noted on the slide, 1103 West Veteran Memorial Boulevard, Suite 104. Star on the map shows the approximate location. The property is designated there. And then, as you can see, the property is designated in that blue, violet-looking color there, and is completely surrounded by commercial or by B5. If approved, the applicant intends to sell spirits as a part of the hookah and cigar lounge business that they would like to put there. And then there are a number of slides that kind of deal with, that is consistent with the comprehensive plan requirements. So I won't go into the details of this unless there's some questions. Consistent with implementing the recommendations associated with the comprehensive plan is noted there. Is a view of the subject property looking north. View of the subject property itself, 103, Suite 104. And all the notification requirements have been met. To date, no written responses have been received regarding this request. Notification extends depicted on this particular map. The council alternatives, as noted, staff is recommending approval of the request from B5 to General Business and Alcohol Sales District. And then also, this case was heard by planning and zoning on April 17. And they concluded with a recommendation to recommend approval with a vote of six to one with Commissioner Sabree, as noted on the slide, sharing her opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Rebell. This business has been there for a while.
Yes, well, that location has.
Right, well, the location of the plaza.
Yes, ma'am.
On veterans. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you so much. Madam Secretary, when you're ready.
DS 23051. Discuss 2021 road construction projects.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, you have five minutes, two times each, to speak. Mr. Zagerz. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem and fellow council members. I'm here at the request to council to give an update on the 2021 roadway construction projects. As you're aware, the project, overall project program was approved in the 2022 budget that included a list of priority projects of different roadways that were partially funded through the Certificate of Obligation Bond that was passed in 2022. And then the remainder is being funded through the street, street maintenance fee. The selected projects that were included in this program include Gilmer Street, Watercrest Road, Bunny Trail, and Willow Springs, as well as part of the design heading towards Stagecoach Road, having to replace what's out there. And then additionally, we have Ransier, the sidewalks reconstruction, and Chaparral Roadways are additional projects we've been working on that are kind of added to this program of the reconstruction. And those are being funded through different, different sources, either bonds or the TERS. And then November 16, that's when we actually, what I was going to do is start hitting through each of the separate projects. So the first one is Gilmer Street, because this is really the first one we're looking at going out for construction. It is one of the two projects that we have really fully funded to go out and get them done as soon as we can. So November 16, 2021, is when we issued a professional service agreement with KSA. They started work on the full design. And this is on Gilmer Street between East Veterans and Ransier Avenue. The project is replacing the entire roadway. It's not what you've seen on some of the stuff you've seen out there where we're just milling, overlaying, doing that surface treatment of about two inches of asphalt. This is where we're ripping up everything and putting back a brand-new road. It has gotten to the point where we cannot perform regular maintenance on these roads without just really wasting money. They've deterred, they've segregated enough to where we just can't maintain them. We got to replace them. Part of this is also looking at improving the sidewalks. We're doing landscaping as getting some street trees, making it look a lot better than what it is, working on some of the drainage along the roadway. And then, of course, having to deal with the railroad crossings. So we're right now waiting for that final permit from the railroad to proceed. We have gotten our final plans. We've gotten our bid documents that we're doing review. Again, we're waiting on a couple easements and then also the approval from the railroad so we can move forward. And then we plan on going out for bid within the next couple of months as soon as we get all of that stuff wrapped up. And then this will be the, again, the first one that'll be under construction. We're expecting it to be out late summer this year. The next project is Watercrest Road. This is, again, same timeframe. We had a professional service agreement with Kay Friesen Associates. And this is for the design of Watercrest. We, this project is actually narrowing from four to three. I think we, I had a previous meeting with council kind of explaining why we did that. We're installing sidewalks on the north side. By reducing it, we can do that and not have to work with the base and get on base property. And then we're also installing a new signal at Robinette, which we found is needed along that roadway. We just received the 60% design plans for that. We're expecting the plans, the final plans to be due at the end of August. However, this is a $15 million project, and we don't have it fully funded yet. So we're going to have to wait for that street fee to build up in the bank so we can then get this one out. Bunny Trail is the next one. We've had a couple meetings on that, a lot of discussions. We've had open house. We, again, in November 16, started the initial design on, with Kimley Horn. And then we had an open house on May 4. January 3 is when we came here, had discussion in regard to the scope of Bunny Trail, to where we're just removing the roadway, working with a couple of the sidewalk gaps, and moving and dealing with the drainage over there at Stan Schluter. We got into the, we agreed with the final service, the final professional service agreement with Kimley Horn to get that done. We just received, see the project again, like I said, replacing the roadway with something brand-new, something that will hold up a lot better than when the last one did. Looking at drainage improvements at Stan Schluter and then also those sidewalk gaps. We have received the 60% dot design plans right now that we're currently reviewing. And then we're expecting the final plans to be due at the end of August. Also, we're working on some easements right now to get those new sidewalks, to get those sidewalk gaps. That'll probably be the item that we're going to have to wait for once we get all those easements that we can then move forward for construction. This is the other project that we have fully funded for construction. So as soon as we get those easements, we're going to go out and bid and get this thing out for construction. Willow Springs is the fourth one on the, on the list. It is also being designed by Kay Fries. We figured we'd bundle those projects together, get a cheaper price, get a little more better design when we're looking at two roads when they intersect with each other. That is being designed currently with Watercrest, but the emphasis is right now on Watercrest. And as soon as that is all done, they're going to focus, the consultant will be focusing on completing the design of these plans. This one is really just removing the roadway and trying to deal with the sidewalks, getting things fixed, getting it up to new ADA requirements or proag. And dealing with some of the issues where we have some right-of-way issues, where there's some parts of the sidewalk and the right-of-ways, they kind of have some conflicts that we'll have to work with. We're also looking at doing the intersection of Watercrest and Willow Springs. Right now, there's kind of a skewed offset. We're trying to straighten that up, make it a little safer. That project is under design, and we expect those final plans, actually, sorry, it wouldn't be preliminary plans. We expect the final plans to be due at the end of this year. And then again, this is another one where we're going to have to be waiting until we actually have the design, the actual construction funds built up in the street fee account. Ransier, oop, forgot an E. On December, we issued a professional service agreement with BGE to do the preliminary design Ransier. So right now, they are, the project is looking at doing just the pavement replacement. We're looking at widening sidewalks. We're looking at storm drainage. We're looking at the traffic on this roadway, landscaping, making it look more like a beautification corridor, an entrance to the city, into the downtown. So we want to make sure that we're getting that streetscaping, the nice materials, the landscaping, have it an impact type of road. And right now, our consultant is out there. They just finished the surveying. We're now looking into right-of-way. We're looking at all the needs. We're having to look at every little instance. The limits are pretty much the entire section of Ransier that we control from, all the way from 38th all the way to Fort Hood. And then again, we're looking, those preliminary plans be due by the end of the year, which we will then be bringing to council so we can then move forward with the design. And then this is being funded through the TERS. Chaparral Road widening. Recently, October of last year is when we actually got the professional service agreement to get started with this project with Friesen Nichols. It's been a long-time type of project. It's been in development for years, dealing with agreements with the schools, the county, the other cities. It's the City of Harker Heights, but we got this in rolling, and it's moving forward. Right now, we are working with the consultant to determine what the alignment of the road will be, especially where it passes the high school. And how are we going to get it to tie back into the old alignment of Chaparral? How are we going to cross Tremere Creek? And then how are we going to tie off on the west end, or let's say, the east end over there in Harker Heights into Still House Lake Road? On April 27, we did have an open house to discuss the project, look at the alignments that we were proposing, get some feedback from the property owners, the public. It was a very well It was a very well-attended meeting, and right now, we're gathering all those comments, getting them together so we can present that to council with, kind of with the results, and then what we're proposing for that corridor, which we expect to be back here about August. And, oh, there we go, the open house. We expect those results in June, and then, like I said, we're planning on being back here in August to move forward.
Is this, did you say the funding side of it? Are we waiting on funding or?
We are going to be looking at funding on this project. It's a very expensive project. The first phase, we're looking at about sixty-three million dollars from Fort Hood all the way to, or One Ninety to East Tremere with all the alignment, the new roadway, all the improvements, widening to five lanes. It has been determined we are going to have to widen to five lanes. So it's a very expensive project. And so, right now, we have some funding from the planning, the K Tempo. We are, we have applied for two grants so far. We've applied for a RACE grant for about thirty million dollars. We are right now submitting an app, a second portion of application for a text dot safe, kind of that Safe Route sidewalks, alternatives type of grant that is due next month. That's another nine million dollars, and we're just keeping our eyes open. At the end of the year, there's FEMA opportunities that we may be looking at as well. So we are trying to get as much money as we can through grants for this project, and it's not going to stop as, until we get this thing constructed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I think that, well, I think, oh, and then, okay, how could we forget Stagecoach? On May second this year, we got a professional service agreement with Pape Dawson to provide the design and the analysis for Stagecoach to fix what's out there. The plan is to replace the roadway itself from, pretty much the whole limits from One Ninety-five and, you know, pretty much from Highway One Ninety-five all the way to East Tremere. We got to replace the whole thing. It's all falling apart. As you know, we are still in litigation, and we're working with that as well. But we are moving forward with the design to get this thing ready to where as we get funds available, we can start getting phases and start repairing that thing as much, as quickly as possible. The, again, project will be bid as we have funds. We have some competition because we also have to work, you know, we're working on the street fee account for this, and we have to kind of prioritize this project, Watercrest and Willow Springs on which one we move forward as that account builds up on dollars. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
I just want to add what you said, the Watercrest, Willow Springs, and Stagecoach. And I know this is your district, and I know you have District Four, and I'm not trying to take a side either. Or, Watercrest have been damaged the longest. Am I correct or not, the roadway?
I don't know the damage and how timeframe. It's just when these roadsways were done through that analysis, when we do a roadway inventory, where they do a surface inventory. We're planning, hopefully, to do that again next year, and found that these roads have aged a lot quicker than they should have been. Don't know really the timeframe, other than they're to the point where we can't do any maintenance. We're just throwing dollars away. Whatever we do, unless we just fully replace the road, we're just going to be throwing money on maintenance. So it's at, these things have degraded so much that we just got to replace them. Watercrest has some other issues in regard to the road design. It's a four-lane road that, in an area with a lot of intersections, driveways, so it's not functioning as a four-lane road. It's the wrong design. A three-lane road will allow you to get those safe turning movements. It'll get those, just a safer type of road to drive on. It'll provide some speed mitigation just on the design itself, which is a concern. We've heard in open house. And then also, by narrowing, we can get that sidewalk on the north side, which we had a lot of comments on, that, you know, there's a, this is an main access to a school, and there's, on the north side, there's just no sidewalks. So we need to get that, get students to be able to walk to school safely and get them crossed over to the school itself, and then getting the signal at Robinette, which will also help with that. Willow Springs is also to a point where it needs to be replacing. There's not as much on a design issue except for the intersection, but it's just a matter of what is a priority? I mean, looking at a roadway safety, I think Watercrest has more issues that need to be addressed. There's also the vertical curve, there's sight distance. We can fix all that stuff. Willow Springs, we're just trying to replace the road and work with the sidewalks in the limits that are already there.
And also with Stagecoach.
And Stagecoach has just fallen apart. We got to, we got to fix it, get rid of the potholes and the ruts and the cracking and everything else that's out there.
So what I'm hearing you to say for safety, Watercrest will be the top priority? Or will it be based on funding?
It's based on funding. I'd like to replace them all.
Yeah, I know. Okay. Thank you so much. Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm going to keep my comments to the road projects of twenty-twenty-one, which, as I particularly requested discussion on, Chaparral, Ransier, and Stagecoach were discussed in twenty-twenty-two. For clarification, Stagecoach, I don't believe was ever included or prioritized in selected projects from the twenty-two budget. Am I correct? Because it was always Willow Springs, Watercrest, Bunny Trail, and Gilmer Street.
Those were the four, and I think when we went out, what I recall is when we went out for the bond itself is when we added at least the design for Stagecoach, because we knew that it's something that had to be addressed. We've been stuck in litigation for several years, and we got to get that moving forward. So I believe that was added to the list when we were going out for the bond.
And my understanding is that it was not prioritized on that original list?
But it wasn't, you're correct. It wasn't on the initial list based on the roadway inventory and the condition of the road.
So my concern is considering prioritizing that road with the first four that we've already established, Gilmer, Bunny Trail, Watercrest, and Willow Springs. First question about Gilmer Street. I suggest that the final design plans have been submitted, and the final bidding documents are being prepared. Did the council get a chance to see the final design and approve it, the final design for Gilmer Street, like we did for Bunny Trail?
Not on this one, because it's really just removing and replacing what's there. It hasn't, it didn't have anything that was really designed consideration, like Bunny Trail had options. We were looking at possibly road dieting or what we needed to do. Gilmer, we're just really picking up and replacing and getting everything out there. Watercrest was another one where we had some design stuff we really wanted to talk to you about.
Okay. Are we adding street trees or lighting at Gilmer Street?
We are.
And improving the sidewalks as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do believe for, you know, for final design for road projects that are funded by the street maintenance fee, I believe it's appropriate that we have, we see those final designs.
We could do that.
Before approval, and I would like to see the final design. I would get a chance. Bunny Trail, this came up because the citizens I represent asked me to get some definite answers on this street. I was at Walmart last week, and a gentleman stopped me before I walked in and said, hey, what's going on with Bunny Trail? Cars are getting damaged, et cetera. We've got all this development. Bunny Trail continues to stay the way it is. The citizens had had conflicting timelines, saying that construction will start in the summer of this time or spring. There's three different ones that have went out, and they don't match up. And so they're looking for a definite timeline at this point, and the frustration is high amongst the citizens. And I'm hearing about this, you know, every week. Now, during the open house on May fourth at the elementary school, the consultant provided the general public with a timeline, a project timeline in relation to the reconstruction of Bunny Trail. And I happened to take a picture and have it here, and I believe we have a slide, if we can pull that up, that references the timeline for it. And it starts pretty much with, in winter of twenty-twenty-one, data collection would occur. And spring of twenty-twenty-two, alternative analysis would occur, which was the open house. Then it goes on, and it says, we are here on that portion of it. That was the open house. Then it suggests in summer twenty-two, the alternative would be selected. That was a process where we went through and said, we want to do the one with the five lanes, or whatever like that. That was supposed to happen in summer of twenty-twenty-two. That happened on January of twenty-twenty-three, about six months later. Then it suggests the project design period should be from summer twenty-twenty-two to spring of twenty-twenty-three. That's now projected for fall of twenty-twenty-three, according to the presentation here. What the consultant provided us suggested that summer twenty-twenty-three to winter twenty-twenty-three would be the start of construction. We're on our way to, we're at basically summer of twenty-twenty-three, and there's no construction. So my, my particular question is what specifically occurred that created the six-month delay?
So assessing all the information, kind of going through what the, what the council, what we heard at the open house, what we're looking at, what the analysis was, coming up with the options, getting on council, you know, getting on the council calendar to present to council, go through the option. We believe we did at least two meetings with the council instead of one. And just getting on that timeframe, we didn't get a final decision until January of this year from, to move forward. So getting on the process, getting with the council, getting with the decisions that were made, it, it took a little longer than what was originally assessed, what they were proposing. That was an aggressive schedule that they presented at the open house. We were automatically, before we even started the final design, we were delayed six months. And so now, we're looking at getting the design six months later, the summer of this year. And we could go to bid in the fall. We found out with the community center, that's probably the worst time to go out for bids. So we're now, we're going to have to look at the best time we can actually go out and get a contractor to get on their schedule, because we have found lately, we are not getting a lot of attention on our bids. We either get one bidder, or we don't get any bidders. In the community center, we had two bidders. The last project I have, will be coming to council, I had one bidder. The one before that had zero bidders. So we're trying to get it to the point where we can establish ourselves in the best position to where we can get a good bid, one within the budget, and get this thing under project, under budget. And so it's, it's a lot of variables. The fact is, our consultant is designing right now. They're getting, we are at sixty percent. We will have the design plans at the end of this summer, and then we can move forward to try to get this thing out for construction.
Mr. Cagle?
Let me respond if you will, Madam Mayor. That's, I've heard this for a year. Engineering studies. We've got to do public, I mean, I'm hearing the same thing. And we're looking at potentially getting bid for construction in the beginning of twenty-twenty-four. This was an issue back in twenty-twenty-one, even before I came on council. And I just knew within two, maybe three years, which has been kind of patient about this, we'd get at least one of these road reconstruction projects going. We're talking about now prioritizing Gilmer Street? That was never a conversation with the council. It was always Bunny Trail first, then Watercrest, and then it was Willow Springs was paired with Watercrest, and then Gilmer Street. And so I'm having trouble working with, communicating to citizens what the definite timeline is, when I keep hearing we're having variables. It's a suggestion that they're working with an aggressive timeline. I mean, I, I mean, do any different consultants? Does it really take this long to do a design?
Yes. A typical roadway design is anywhere from two to five years, depending on the construction or what the complication. It takes time.
And I guess at this point, we need to, as a, as a council, determine which road is going to get repaired in what order, based on funding. That's important, because it's not clear to the citizens. We can sit here and talk about Gilmer Street, and it may, I mean, this is, it's not clear. And I want the citizens to have a more definite timeline on these streets. They're driving on them. They're tired of them being beat up. I mean, it's just, and I have to tell them the same thing. It's old. So without repeating myself, a few other questions.
Mr.
Are the engineering studies complete?
Councilmember Board, one quick question, answer. On Gilmore Street, that was, and correct me if I'm wrong, that was done under the leadership of Capatrie Flemis, Judge Johnson, and Steve Harris. That was one of the top priorities that they had put in place, one of the things that Judge Gregory Johnson stated before he left the dais. And the staff agreed that that would be the number-one priority. Now, I can understand your concern. It's not clear. But I wanted to, I can only speak on that because I was on the council. In all fairness of those four council members, they did fight for Gilmore Street way before this council came into play. And it was told to them that that would be a priority, but they had to do an assessment on it. And that's all I can say about that street. I just want to share that.
And what I'm saying is that the council, this council wasn't aware, and still isn't aware, which street goes first?
Yes, sir. I know your time, but I, I took up your time. So please finish your, the rest of your questions, because I did end them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at this question, at this point, I'd like to go back to my citizens and give them a more definite timeline. But the question I have for you right now is, what can be done? What can be done? There's always a way to get things done, to accelerate the process.
Really, I'm, I'm the schedule of a consultant. I can try to get them done in time. I've got sixty percent plans right now that I got to review. And then we got to give it back to the consultant, and they have to get it done. They have a schedule. They have, they have an estimated timeframe they gave us. We can encourage them to try to get it done in time, you know, sooner. But I don't have all the, I don't have all the easements, so we won't be able to build sidewalks. If you don't want us to do sidewalks and fill in the gaps, we could do that, and I can just focus on the roadway.
No, we're not going to do that. I would appreciate if you did suggest.
Those are all items that we got to deal with, and that's why it takes time. Because now, we have to get easements. We have to find out who the property owners. Those are all things that happen and are discovered when you do a design, and that's why roadway designs take longer. Two years is great if you don't have anything. But as soon as you start doing right-of-way easements, railroads, they can delay things. If you have an environmental issue, if you have streams, those are all items that you don't know at the beginning, but as you start working on a design, it affects the schedule. We try to get things done as fast as possible. We want to get them done. But there are some times where we have to just kind of wait till things get worked out.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. And I'm just thinking about my conversation with the consultants at that, at this program. It's as if these guys are on top of this. And, you know, without repeating myself, but I'm just going to get to the point. At this point, I'm going to make a motion in direction for staff to create a press release, which includes the twenty-twenty-one road reconstruction project updates for the purpose of providing citizens with a more definite timeline to rely on.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second, Councilwoman Gonzalez?
A second, love.
Mr. Cagle?
I mean, that's great. We can make that motion. What I'm going to have to do is direct the engineer to build in extra time, because we're not going to put something out again and not meet it. So I just need you all to be aware of that. You're, you're asking this staff to fix like fifty years of bad policy, and we're doing the best we can to do it. I've tried to tell you multiple times, the multimillion-dollar projects you're asking us to do, everything is a priority. We get up here and we're told, that's a priority. Do it. That's a priority. Do it. We, you just had an example here today. We don't, we can't even hire an engineer. We're having to hire outside firms just to review subdivision plans. These are not the only projects that are going on, and we do not, we can't always determine what goes on. When private development comes in, we have to deal with it. We have a very small number of people dealing with multimillion-dollar projects.
And I understand that. Here, here's the thing. When the city put out.
Councilmember Board.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to let Mr. Cagle complete.
I'm done. Thank you. No, I'm.
I was just going to say, Madam Mayor, that the issue is that the city has put out several of these releases with suggested an almost definite timelines, three different times, three different dates. And so I'm trying to see, it's important to me that we put out something that's more clear, and I respect what he's saying. We want to make sure we get it right this time. If we could just do that, that would help, because it's coming off as disingenuine from the citizens that we are saying this, but really don't mean it, and we don't have our minds made up. When we, it's funded, it's prioritized, it just needs to be communicated to them at least how we go, where we are in progress, and what they can expect. That's all I got. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I do know that we do have a motion on the floor to put out twenty-twenty-one roadways that will be constructed. And what I'm hearing you just saying, yes, sir, I promise you, you're the expert. I'm just here trying to get understanding on your motion, on his motion. So twenty-twenty-one, what did you state, Mr. Councilmember Board?
Yes, the motion is to have staff create a press release, which includes the twenty-twenty-one road reconstruction project updates, which we have in the presentation, for the purpose of providing citizens with a more definite timeline to rely on.
Okay.
If we want to include the other ones, that's fine.
And Mr. Cagle, I'm trying to get what you're saying, because we have a new council member. We're just saying a lot of things and trying to understand. We're getting a presentation that was requested, and thank you for it, and you've given us information. And then the Gilmore, I understand your concern that that really won the top priority, but that was, that was in two thousand, I think, two thousand seventeen. That's two thousand seventeen that was promised to that council. So I don't know what happened. I'm going to. So I don't know what happened, I'm going to take an aside, try to be neutral, but I want understanding to why we do what we do.
So I can add one thing. The dates are always a moving target as we move forward. We, we're given the best guess and everything we have based on information we get from our consultants. We have a 60% plan that now, we ask them, how long will it take? When we start a project, we try to give our best guess. I've been adding, and you had it included in your packet as our quarterly report, and that gives you, every three months, we update it. And if we have to change dates, it's because it's information we receive from our consultant or where we are today. I don't know, in three months, those dates may change. What we put out, if we put out a press release, we're going to say right now that we're going to be shooting for Bunny Trail to be out for construction early 2024. Gilmer Street will be out for construction this year. Watercrest, Willow Springs, when available funding is going to be, when funding is going to be available, and I don't have a date for that. Stagecoach, same thing. So those are the dates you're going to see, but I don't, I can't give you, it's going to be March, it's going to be April. Right now, my best is, I got to give you a quarter of when I'm trying to get out there, just because of what it takes, what the process is to get things, to get a contractor on the ground.
Thank you for your honesty, and I just don't want to put things in the paper, and we're not going to be able to commit what we're telling the residents, and that's what goes back to Councilmember Board, for three times that we put information out there, and that information is not, I'm not saying it's not correct, I'm just saying if you don't have the supplies that are needed, or things just fall through the crack, or whatever the situation might be, things happen. But Mr. Cagle wanted to give his comments, and then following him would be Councilwoman Gonzalez, Mr. Cagle?
Just to clarify what you just heard, that Gilmer's probably going to be the first one ready to go. Yes, it was the first street staff was told to get reconstructed, but it's not, it's not like we prioritized it over the others. It's a simpler project, and it was easier to engineer, and it's just, the engineering's going to be done before Bunny Trail. If you want to tell us to stop and not bid it until we bid Bunny Trail, we can do that. But there was, there was no effort on staff's part to say, hey, let's move one street ahead of the other. It was just a much simpler project engineer. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Thank you. Just for clarity as well, and refresh my memory if I have to go back and look, but there was an initiative or directive that was given from council some time back about keeping a tab on our website of where we were with projects. I understand everything that's being said, and it does make perfect sense. I also understand the dilemma that we are sometimes in when there's changes and people don't know what's going on. I would, I don't know if we're posting there, I don't believe that we are actively updating that information, so I don't know if that would be sufficient as far as an update. Does anyone know, do we have that information, do we know if we're actively posting those updates?
We do have the engineering quarterly report. We do, we update this every three months.
We're thinking...
And this has every project that is going through engineering, whether it be our water sewer projects, our roadway projects, and development, and these are updated by our staff every three months, and it's on the website.
Yes. We had referred to a simple, easy, user-friendly tracker, I have to go back and look at that, but we had requested something, user-friendly, that was just very simple, to say where we were with projects, or if there was an update, we had a page where constituents could go and see. I think really that's, to me, that seems to be that just the issue is, just knowing that, yes, we're working on it, and I know the reports are there, but something simple, clear, and concise, that we're working on it, funding's not available. If it was there, clear and concise for them, I think it would be a lot easier, but I'll look into that information if we can. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Cagle, I just wanted to say something in reference to what you stated. I don't, I don't know how this vote's going to go, but my top priority to be in the mayor is neutral. I live in District 2, but I do understand the priority has always been Gilmer Street since I've been on the council, and I do know things change, and that information may not have been shared with all the council. So when there is a concern, when something new is out there, and they question, well, Stagecoach wasn't there, Gilmer wasn't there, then that's the advantage, being on here longer, you have all the knowledge of what happened in the beginning, and that clarity, we got to do better in getting that information out. But you made a statement, and I totally disagree. The mission always changed, roadways always change, and if we know that Gilmer is the top priority, and it's not what you're saying, you proposed it to the council, if this is what you're saying, that we should put Gilmer on hold in order to take care of, I don't know if it was Watercrest, I don't know what street it was, it's not, it's not right for the good of the city. And as a council, we are limited on our resources, we are limited on our budget, and I thank goodness for how Councilmember Board, and Councilmember Gonzalez, and Councilmember Cobb, and also our prior, former councilmember Adams fought for their district. That is great, and that's your job, that's what they elected you to do. But we have to look at the city as a whole, what is best for all residents of the city of Killeen. And I don't think it's right to put off a project that we can do, and we have the funds, to wait until we get what is needed to complete another project. That is just my perspective from the mayor's seat, because I always have to put the city above all, and that's everyone. So council, what is your pleasure? You want the motion that's on the floor? You can vote in favor of it or against it, it's up to you. We can, it's time to vote. What the motion was stated, Councilwoman Gonzalez, Councilmember Board, which you second, stated that all the projects that's for 2020, 20, I mean, 2021 should be put in a news release and go out to the public. And Mr. Hager is saying, hey, just telling you all, that's not, that's not accurate, because things change, and we, it doesn't look the same because of simple fact, we don't have all the stuff. So if you vote yes, you're going to put our information out there for 2021, even though he's telling you something different. So it's yes if you want to put our information only on 2021, or no if you want to go with what staff and Mr. Cagle recommended, that it's always a moving target. So what's your pleasure? So we have Council, Mayor Protem, and we have Councilwoman Cobb. Thank you, Mayor Protem. The motion carries three to one to put 2021 information out there. All right, moving on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, once we make a motion, you can't go back. Once you vote on it, it's done. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting law, Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the 16th day, May 2023, at 8:28 PM, under the following authority. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, the city council will discuss the purchase, exchange, lease of the value of real property. Deliberations in the open meeting of this matter would have a detrimental effect on the city council position in negotiation. Items, agenda items, DS-23-052, DS-23-053. We're going in closed meeting. We're calling our meeting back to order at 9:10. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
A second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.